Good evening and welcome to tonight's school bar meeting. It's Monday, November the 11th, 2019, 6:04. We're in the Susan Tully Lives Day building of the 1887 Building. I'd like to call the meeting. Mr. Kell, I'd like to call both.
This is Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gaylord.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Ms. Degner.
Here.
Ms. Gatcha.
Here.
We do have a forum. We will continue. I know that tonight's meeting has been notice per state statues. Is there any community participation other than what's on the agenda? Not seeing any. We'll dispense with reading that and go to the Westside Elementary student presentation.
My name is Elizabeth Fox Boyd. I'm an instructional specialist from Westside. This is Diana Rikers. She's a fifth grade teacher at Westside. We're here to talk just a little bit about our check-in, check-out program that we utilize. It is part of our PBIS system. PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. It's in place to help our students who have some difficulty sometimes regulating their emotions and behaviors, similar to an academic intervention. We create some supports for our students who have some difficulties in that regard. We're going to kind of key into our check-in, check-out process. Diana Rikers is part of our PBIS committee. She's also a teacher who utilizes the check-in and check-out process with some of her students.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. So Ben Kitzler put together a little video of a couple of teachers who use this system and some students who use it as well. So I'm going to have you play Mr. Kell Lock and then I'll answer any questions.
I think check-in, check-out is great for the students. There's a lot of benefits for it. First of all, it gives the kids a positive step to start off their day. They come into my room in the morning and I have rapport with a student that I'm checking in and checking out with right now. He was in my class last year, so I get to start off my day just lifting him up and getting one, a bright step for the day. Then he, we talk about what his goal is for the day. A lot of times his goal is working on not shouting out in class or being positive to other students in the class, those who have been, what has been struggling with this year. So I get to boost him up for the day and then check in with him again at the end of the day and he comes in with a smile on his face. This has been a super positive step for him. He comes in, we check out. We talk about what his goals were for the day. If he met his goal, he gets a little prize that goes, that he takes away. Right now he's getting a piece of candy, but most days he's like, I don't need to need the candy. I had a great day. So I think check-in, check-out is really positive if we can find what's motivating for the kids. It gives them another person in their life that can be a positive role model for them and an opportunity to just start their day out great and hopefully check in with them throughout the day as well. It's not the same for everybody, but we're working on being respectful, responsible, and safe in school. So every student has their own goals that we're hoping can just get them right back down to victory.
I'm Diana Rikers. I teach fifth grade at Westside and I have a couple of kiddos on check-in, check-out this year and we've found some really great benefits from it. The kids are able to have a positive right when they start their day. They go through the day and they can monitor how they're doing depending on which factors we want to help them focus on. And they get rated throughout the day and they get to have that quick moment like right after class, like, oh, how do you think you did on this? Yep, you're going to get a one instead of a two today. So they kind of see immediately what, how their behavior was during that class. And at the end of the day, they check out with that same person they checked in with in the morning and they're able to kind of help the kiddos see what they did that was great that day and help them to leave on positive notes. So it really is helping some of our kids who need a little extra for their day.
A benefit of check-in, check-out is establishing a relationship with the student that I check in and check out daily. So every morning we go to each other and talking about their night from the previous night and then also what they're doing that's coming up. So it's a great way to establish a relationship.
I like check-in, check-out because I like to show my teacher how good I did.
I like check-in, check-out with Ms. Alzner because she allows me to explain what I did good, what I need to work on and it helps me for the next day to figure out what I need to work on, why I did good the other day and to make sure I did what I did.
I like check-in, check-out with Mrs. Swobers because, which is the oldest lady, which tells us what's going on. Does that stick? And I like check-in, check-out with her because at the end she's really nice and she gives me prizes if I get all twos and if I get all zeros or ones, she helps me.
Check-in, check-out has helped me with keeping in and out of our objects, work, people. It's also helped me with going through some math, science, or studying. And I really appreciate it because I can, I can do this and I have a prize.
Check-in, check-out has helped me by helping me improve my behavior and it helps me explain how I get, how I have anger and then how to handle my anger. And then it helps by helping me calm down and it helps me remind myself if I'm doing something wrong, how to correct it.
It helps me because my mom said it definitely more than I want to be happy.
Okay, so just a little bit more of students who are maybe getting multiple write-ups or constantly getting in trouble in classes are taken to some committees with the school psych and our principal and lots of different people. And we talk about what we can do to help them and sometimes a check-in, check-out is a great program for them. So they meet with someone in the morning, preferably not a teacher that they have, someone different in the building that they have a relationship with, the secretary or maybe the music teacher or something. They get a chart that has their schedule on it and they get rated. Some of the younger kids just have happy face, frowny face. Older kids have three, two, one or something like that. And they have usually three goals or so to work on for the day. And then they go through the day with their little clipboard. At the end of the day, they add up their points and they go check out with that same person they started with. And we're seeing a lot of great improvements in some of our kiddos that have multiple write-ups or problems with their behavior in the classroom. Thank you for listening. Do you have any questions for me at all?
How many students do you have? Sorry, sorry. How many students do you have in Westside that are doing?
On the program? I know four, I think.
There are currently eight, but there are about 10 that are in the process of getting into the check-in, check-out.
And how many kids would one teacher be responsible for or one person be responsible for?
It can vary. For example, I'm going to be responsible for two. Some teachers are responsible for one. It just really does depend on the student and that person's relationship as well. It's a very careful match between the mentor and the mentee. So we really consider that it has to be a good match for them to really connect.
Is this a Westside only program?
No, no. In fact, is it a middle school?
So my check-in and check-out is what we call usually a tier-two intervention. It's like we have tier-two and tier-three academic interventions. We have tier-two and tier-three behavioral interventions. And check-in, check-out would be a tier-two. Some schools do it differently. I know that at Jackson Elementary, they have a room that has specific people assigned. It's an empty room. All the mentees, check-out, check-out, check-in, check-out personnel go to in the morning and then kids come to that room. So it's the same person in that room, but it's always in the same location. So it's done differently in different places. But it's that idea that they have a goal that they're, they've created a relationship is the most important thing. Second thing is that there's a goal and then they give their little sheet to their teachers at the end of each period. You have either points. Some kids get smiley faces, you know, depending on the age range of the kids. And then at the end of the day, they're accountable to their mentee and they even, you know, if the points aren't there, there's still always that unconditional relationship. Even, oh, maybe you didn't meet your goal and you really screwed up and you got all frowny faces. Oh, they, that person, you know, they know Mr. Rikers is always going to be there for them unconditionally. And that's okay.
If I may add too, I think it really helps the kids be mindful of how they're acting. They may go through a whole day and not even know how many times they interrupted class, but then when they have that in front of them, that really helps them. Or I've found trends like the morning's pretty good, but uh-oh, the afternoon and that last period of the day is always ones and why is that? So it gives us a chance to talk about that.
Thank you very much for coming in. I know Mr. Kitzler wanted to be here, but he had to go to Leclerc tonight for the principals' conference and making a new principal. He'll be there and so he'll be up there and thank you very much for coming and representing.
He's moving.
You're moving? I'm moving.
No, I was like that. You can't do this.
Overnight travel request from a cheerleading team.
My name is Carrie Greenwell and I'm here to ask for my cheer team to travel to a national competition, February 7th through 9th up in Minneapolis. We've done quite a bit of fundraising, non-school-related fundraising. We worked Row Fest. We worked the fair. We worked Barnyard Adventures every single day. We did the Zoomer Run. We are just finishing our school-related fundraiser with a nice profit. And we have one more non-school-related fundraiser in February through the Rock Department. Our entry fees are listed at $30 per person and I'd be taking 25 athletes with me. Our transportation is just for the bus alone. Our driver is donating all the time and she wants to be a part of it. She's to drive us all the time and she wants to be there. We have a hotel for two nights, needing nine rooms. So that brings our total to 6,447, which with all of our fundraising, we're looking at less than 100, if anything at all. We might even have enough food for, excuse me, enough money for food stipend to cover it completely. The chaperones, me, myself, my assistant coach Tina, and my husband to chaperone the boys. This will give them the opportunity to meet and compete against other teams from other states. It pulls teams from Wisconsin, Minnesota, Iowa, North and South Dakota. They'll be competing against other scholastic teams, so high school-aged teams, middle school and elementary. Not only that, but also collegiate and all-star teams for an overall award. The three-day competition will challenge us definitely physically, but mentally as well. The competition is just a few weeks before state, so it will definitely be a good gauge to see where we're at. Does anyone have any questions?
Are you practicing right now?
Yeah. Yeah. We've already started.
Okay. Well, cool.
How many guys do you have on the team?
I have nine total. I actually doubled my numbers this year, so I'm really sorry. I used to like, we have 42, 40, no, excuse me, 44 athletes up this year.
Where do you practice?
We practice in the cheer gym on the far end, the north end.
Oh, of the, okay. Because I was just wondering, because that's a lot of kids.
It's a lot. It is a lot. It was kind of shocking. Normally when we have new season tryouts, I might get, you know, five, six show up and hopefully two stay, but I doubled, you know. It was really, it was really nice. I just kind of look, I don't know what to do with them all, but it's so wonderful. It's such a melting pot.
So do you go with different teams or do they?
This would just be the varsity team. The varsity kind of team, which there's seven boys on that one.
Okay, wow. Well, you need to bring back some video of what they do. That would be nice for us to see.
Yeah.
Do you have a social media page?
We do. We have Instagram and Facebook.
Okay. You're not on Twitter?
We are on Twitter. I just don't post a whole lot to Twitter, but there's a ton on Instagram.
Okay.
Lots and lots of videos.
Under Elkhorn Cheer?
Mm-hmm. Under Elkhorn Cheer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions? Otherwise, per our policy, we do need to approve this as it is an overnight travel request. Looking for a motion to do so.
I'd like to move to approve the overnight travel request for the cheerleading team and as presented.
Is there a second? So move in a second to approve the overnight travel request from the cheerleading team as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Middle school, high school, and crew.
Yes, I've asked the high school to present first. Mr. Kellier has an engagement that he needs to get to, so.
Driving a kid down to another district. So thank you for this opportunity. My name is Chris Trady. I'm the principal at Elkhorn High School. I asked Mrs. Sarah Vash, 612 curriculum director, to join me. So as we've been asked to go through the data, our four goals, as you can see in the goals, we've connected them to the four kind of targeted areas of focus for the district. In addition, I handed out to you a future-ready dashboard. Obviously, this board is familiar with redefining ready. One of the pivots that our building has continued to talk about and reference was moving away from, so if you're, historically, you hear the continual trend to talk about four-year universities and college and at the same time, you hear that from Avid, right? That's kind of been their mission. But behind the scenes, Avid also says, no, it's about career-ready. And then we have this, you know, we have this real push where we want to make sure every kid has an opportunity to be post-secondary-ready, whatever it may be. So we kind of came to the agreement that we're just going to start calling it future-ready. So whatever your choice is. So this dashboard is our maiden voyage. We've had something in the past, but we really want to make it come more of a quality print piece and then also just make it more public. In addition, our goal, thank you, our goal is eventually, after working with our school counselors, is to have kids similar to the redefining ready to fill this out on their own, so they can track where they're at and what they're doing and then get some sort of measurement and acknowledgement for being future-ready if they've met multiple, you know, a couple in each column, which mirrors what redefining ready is doing at District 214. So any questions on this document? It's similar to what you've seen in the past, but it just tweaks. As you, one point of emphasis, it's very, as District 214, the redefining ready movement has struggled with, the life-ready indicators, we've kind of personalized it. I worked with our school counselors to identify some of those. So that's where we're at right now with our life-ready goals. So our first goal, our rigor goal, is going to be by the end of the 1920 school year, class of 2022, will increase the percentage of students scoring a college-ready. I think that's supposed to be an ACT Aspire by 5% in all four areas tested. And then here's our targeted goal. So some of the why, which is explained above, is we've kind of just seen some flat-line growth with our kids. We've been above the ACT with our kids before everybody started taking it. So we're proud of that goal. That's been good and we've seen growth. One of our second or third years, we had a, I think it was a graduating class of 17 or 18, we had a big jump because we had, we had new, probably 25 to 30 kids in the 30-plus range. But what we did is through kind of our equity lens, we saw that on the lower end, some of our kids and some of our marginalized kids or our kids of color or economically disadvantaged weren't scoring. We have seen that area grow, but we, but the top end, we're still trying to stretch more. So that's why we looked at that goal as a good measurement, as a springboard to the junior year. One of the challenges is, I'm still trying to, ACT says this, trying to figure out if the Spire, even though it's considered an ACT product, is a direct correlate, you see a direct correlation to their college readiness and then you aspire as they do an ACT. And.
Still work on it.
Yeah.
The numbers are all off.
Yeah.
The wording is a little bit off, but it's much of the same skills.
So, and it's a newer 7 for 8 for ACT also. So the next goal, Jason, can you control it, please? The relevancy goal, again, by the completion of 1920 school year, we will increase the number of career-based learning experiences by 15%. So we have continued trying to expand those career-based learning experiences, get kids out in the workforce and we're very proud and happy to have 125. We'd like to see that grow, go up 15%. I can tell you in that relevancy area and in the career indicator, our CT instructors are very focused on industrial, industry certifications. So it'll be interesting to see on this future-ready dashboard and how those increase. So there's, I'm anticipating a big jump. We'll see. Next one, in the 1920 school year, increase the percentage of students who have a trusted adult by 10% from 76% to 86%, to 76 to 86%. So this came from the YRBS data, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data. And one of the things that stuck out to us is basically, we only had 76% of our kids who have a trusted adult at the high school. Kind of an issue. So we set it 10%. So we're going to keep, we developed a kind of site-based assessment so we can assess that each try and get data collected more regularly versus the YRBS is a large assessment with large data. So we just need something more formative ongoing so we can check that. And then our responsiveness goal, by the completion of the 1920 school year, all collaborative teams at Elkhorn High School will move at least one level on the Elkhorn High School Adult Learning Framework. So this is something that as a leadership team, in conjunction with our, our school improvement team, our teachers as teams have said, what's the destination? Where do you want us? Right? So you have, as leaders, we want to kind of walk that fine line between empowering our teachers, allow them innovation and flexibility and to explore. At the same time, how do we give clear direction on what the end goal is? I can tell you personally, that's always hard, right? Because each teacher has different needs and each team has different needs. So Sarah, I'm on myself, Ryan, Dan, Jamie, we put together this adult learning framework where there's four phases and we just went through all of the things that we believe are really important, whether it's from Avid to any of the initiatives we have. So we kind of just put it into one working document. And each team set a goal, did a self-assessment, and then they set a goal on how they're going to get to the next level. The three focus areas are literacy, academic culture, and?
And the high performance.
High performing or PLC essentials. So academic culture with high-performing relationships, our PLC work, and then our literacy. And Sarah, do you want to talk a little bit about kind of the feedback we receive from teachers on this?
They're so happy because now they have that goal in mind and they have a destination for where they need to get to. And it's very clearly spelled out exactly what they need to. You can see, we've modeled it to be a rubric, something that they're very familiar with. So we also put ideas for progress on here, so they have ideas for what things they need to get completed or to do to get to that next phase.
I think they also like the fact that I can say, okay, I'm here.
Yep.
I need to do this this year. I need to do this this year. I need to do this year and I have this three-year vision on where we need to go.
Well, because otherwise it feels like we have to get all of this done this year and a lot of these things that we do take a long, long time to get in place. So, actually a long, long time. It's a three-year plan.
PLC stands for professional learning community?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Could you share with them how you group? That's all right. How you group your, the teachers?
The teachers at the high school are grouped by whoever teaches the same courses as them. So that way, all of our kids have the same learning targets and the same summative assessments. So that doesn't matter what teacher your kid takes, they're getting the same learning experience.
And if you're in a class where, for example, I'm in tech ed, right? More, right?
Right.
T-12, nobody else does.
Correct. How many sections? 12. Right, correct. Which is true. What we talk with those teams about is focusing on common skills, right? So all those teachers can have conversations about what's the best practice on how to bed disciplinary literacy in my classroom? What do high-quality assessments look like? So those are the conversations they're having also. So that's been really healthy.
So yeah, we group the tech ed teachers together. Yeah.
Any questions for the high school?
I would just still like to reiterate, the career and the trade program has been nothing but totally wonderful for this district. I have a lot of parents saying, oh, like, what's it going to do this? Or, I don't know, you know, like, I see the trick. But we have that and it's been really, really positive for this district. And when I was skimming through the relationship goals, like, what do I want to pick out? I read, have a trusted adult from 10% to 76 to 80%. I went 10% thinking 10% is where we're at. And it kind of like, I reread that, so.
And I will say, Chris and his team, their aspiration was 100%, which we think is wonderful when they met with the directors and went through those goals. You know, we wanted to be a realistic goal and we felt that a 10% increase, if they hit that mark, that would be great because you might catch kids when they're taking the survey on a bad day where they're like, yeah, no, I hate all these.
No, I hate all these.
But so they're, to their credit, they want 100% on that, is what they're striving for.
No, it's fantastic.
I brought in a few kids out in the community to get my hair cut and things that are involved in the work studies and things like that and had some good conversations there. And the neat thing is, it's kind of the check-in, check-out for them as well. That is a great component for their goals. And I just talked about a lad I had a long time ago, was going to be a mechanic and it really wasn't working out and he's got his own business now. It's just phenomenal and it is. It's about making that connection and then pursuing that. And I think we have a lot of opportunities out there where kids are starting to get involved in those. And they find not only within our educational community, outside the support we have is phenomenal as well.
Yeah, they're able to pursue their passion.
I think one story I want to tell that we're, you know, we've, because of those successes, we've been fortunate enough to have very vocal business partners who help us extend our reach and we take advantage of those opportunities. So we had an opportunity, I got a very odd email last February from M7. If you're familiar with M7, these are all the economic development organizations, kind of started, initiated, supported, encouraged by the Foxconn Development. And then basically, it's all the economic development organizations in the seven counties, including Milwaukee, in that vicinity, shall we say.
Which we're not, Walworth is not one of them.
Correct.
Right, right.
Correct. So they started, it was about manufacturing and I got invited to this meeting in Milwaukee and I walk in and Vince Bertram, the CEO of Project Leadways, is next to me and the lady from We Energies and Harley Davidson and Star Gento and keep going. Maybe a long story longer. That ended up resulting in basically a, well, that ended up where we were, Mr. Thomas, myself and Mrs. Pella went up to Milwaukee again for a meeting and were able to partner up with industry in Milwaukee. And for us to try and find one was very, very difficult. We ended up finding one. They're out, they're out of Waukesha in Whitewater. Their manufacturing facility, my, slips my brain right now.
General?
No. I'll think of it. But anyways, the point is, where I'm going with this is what they were looking for, it was FASs, what they were looking for, all these schools in Milwaukee, is what we have.
I know. And I have relatives living in the Milwaukee area and they go, well, they, too bad, they got rid of this, they got rid of that. We have it, we have it. And they're going, that's great, but, yeah, they're struggling with that.
Okay. I just want to add while they're here, the state report cards are embargoed, so it's, once they're not embargoed, I plan on sharing with the board at the meeting, you know, the update, here's what our state report cards were and what that means. And I know we don't put a big emphasis on that, but I do want to recognize, we've seen for a couple of years, the states, you know, been announcing that at the high school level, they'll start counting growth scores. That's why you have the ACT Aspire. And we've known that the high school growth score, because last year they showed, we're not counting it, but here's what it would be. And we know it was very high. This year, the high school score report card, when it's unembargoed, I can't tell you the exact number, but has gone up by approximately 15 points on their overall score. And it would have gone up even higher, except that they did so well on the closing gaps score improvement, that they didn't count it in the overall report card score. They said that they'll report it, but they're not counting it because it went up by over 20 points. So that work that they're doing.
What? Statistical anomaly.
Yeah. The work that they're doing on making sure that our children of poverty, our minority students, our students with disabilities are improving was, yeah, so significant that they'll just have to wait another year for it to get counted, so. Whatever.
Just a side note too about Avid. Avid is starting to change the way that they look at things and they're starting to add the career piece to the college. So you're going to start seeing that change come through about their literature, which I'm very excited about. So just, just the word where. That's good. That's good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Do you want me to stand with you?
No, Miss Rimey can stand with me. Oh, that's really tiny. Ryan McBurney, principal at the middle school, what?
Jess Rimey, associate principal at the middle school.
I've never been in a room with Rachel where she's been so quiet, too. I know I'm different, Rachel. So for our school improvement plan, which for Miss Rimey and Mr. Reddell and Mrs. Gosh and myself, really started into digging into the data over the summer as kind of, you know, Jess in a new role and he new to the building and then giving Sarah and Adam the chance to kind of relook at things from a little bit bigger picture. Our data kinda, when we presented it to our school leadership team, led us to, you know, our focus areas that matched perfectly with our rigor and relevance and relationship goals. So we feel good about the work that we're doing and that we have a vision for where we're going and really excited to see our growth this year and in coming years. From a rigor standpoint, we took a look at the, our three areas of math testing, math reading and language arts. And we know through studies kind of what the typical growth is and how many, what percentage of your students will meet that growth, right? So on the, kind of the middle column there, you'll see at each grade level, in each area, what percent of our students are meeting their growth goals. Now, my initial reaction, and I will not blame anybody for having the same thing, is like, sixty percent, like, I want one-hundred percent of our students to meet their growth goals. Like, I feel like that's a responsibility of us as educators in the building. When you dive deeper into the math, if you just take a look at sixth grade math, currently we have sixty-one percent of our students meeting their growth goals. If we were to increase that by five percentage points to sixty-six percent of our students meeting their growth goals, that means that we are in line with our vision of the district in the top ten percent of all we do. We're just on the outside looking in right now. So we know that statistically, the idea of one-hundred percent of students meeting their goals, although that's our, you know, that's where our heart is, that in order to statistically show that we are in the top ten percent of all we do, we need to get to that, in this case, sixty-six percent. So that's what our goals are based on, so that vision of being in the top ten percent in all those different areas. So we're going to, we've had our first round of math testing and we'll have another round here in the winter to monitor and make any revisions in our action plans and looking forward to where we, see where we land at the end of the year.
Okay, let me chime in just for clarification on this. So when a student takes the math assessment, say they take it in the fall, let's say Johnny's in sixth grade math and he scores a two-ten. They compare, they look at all other sixth graders who scored a two-ten in the fall, and they look and see what was their average growth from fall to spring? And so that might be six points growth. It varies slightly depending on what score that student scored in the fall, but they're compared to all like scores. And then that becomes their target. So that target is based off of the average. So when you're getting, basically in math, when you get about seventy percent or not even quite to that level, seventy percent of the kids exceeding the average growth target, that puts you in, when compared to other schools, in that ninetieth percentile or better on student growth. Because you're exceeding that average growth.
And this is in Wisconsin?
It's a national.
So do the eighth grade kids that are in the advanced math take the ninth grade math? There is no math test?
So the math tests adjust based on where that student's at.
So I was just told that my fifth grader who's in compacted sixth grade math right now took the sixth grade math test.
There's a, there's a six through twelve and there's a...
So how would that fall into the...
Math for primer. It really, all the six through twelve tests just has a larger pool of questions at the higher level.
Got it.
So the way math works is they go, it will start the student at a question that's leveled at the level they finished off.
And then it keeps going.
If they get it right, they give them a more difficult question. If they get it wrong, they'll go down. And it's, the test is actually adapting to where it finds the spot that that kid gets half of them right and half of them wrong.
I was confused because I was told that she took a different class, so, I didn't know of that.
Yeah, so they, if they're, if they're real high achieving in elementary school, it really doesn't make a significant difference, other than it has more questions at the higher level on the sixth.
So the kids that are eighth grade taking that geometry course, they're...
Yeah, they're all taking the same test.
Yeah, okay, just adjusting.
But literally, no kid takes the exact same test.
Right, because it's adjusting for every kid. Can you, this may be a difficult question for you, simply because you're new at the position, but I'm seeing a kind of a significant drop-off from reading from seventh grade to eighth grade in terms of where kids are coming in at. Do you, have you been able to identify?
So I...
Why?
As, as you get, as you get older in the, in the grade levels, those, these percentages are, when you compare them to the percentile, like, they become a moving target.
Okay.
So our, although we may see that, you know, fifty-four percent of students are meeting their growth goals in eighth grade, that percentile is very similar, if not the same, to the one in seventh grade.
Okay.
So from that perspective, it's, it's not a huge drop in percentile.
Okay.
It's so much more difficult as they get older to meet that growth goal.
But in order to do an analysis, they would have to look at, well, where was this eighth grade group, this cohort, because they're different kids?
Yep.
What was their growth percentage in seventh grade, what was it in sixth grade?
Sure.
So we look at trends over time and then try to identify, would look at several years' data before identifying, okay, yep, there's something going on with eighth grade reading instruction.
Yep, okay, got it.
That's not, because those numbers will...
Yep.
Sometimes balance from you. But when we do identify consistent trends, then we know we need to dig in and find out what's behind them.
Okay.
All right, and then I guess I need to scroll over because it shows the goal for each of those areas.
Yeah. The one I would point out is our eighth grade language arts. You'll see that there's only a, we're only looking for a two percent increase in students meeting their growth goals there, which again, it's like, point two, again, that's four or five kids, right? So, but, you know, that could seem like a rather low goal, but our sixty-six percent of students meeting growth goals in language arts for that eighth grade level is already above the ninetieth percentile. And this would bring them up to the ninety-fifth percentile.
Okay.
In working with them, again, to make some, a goal that's attainable, that's kind of where the numbers fell. All right, our relevance goal is focused on, on reading, you know, just like, I feel like all students, you know, should be at their growth goal. We feel like it's our job to get, work towards all students reading at grade level, too. It's such a gateway to whatever opportunities lay in front of them, you know, whatever type of reading it is. So we have three kind of benchmarks for our reading progress, one being the math reading test, which is heavy on the comprehension aspect. We have the forward exam, which is, again, heavy on comprehension, but also uses some mindsets that supports our writing instruction. And then the last one is the reading inventory, which has an aspect of fluency and comprehension to it. So it's, they're very balanced assessments. And in reviewing kind of that longitudinal data over time, there's not a lot of, not a lot of places, there's more places we didn't get our kid, half of our kids over that goal than we did, you know, which is, which is something, an area that we need to work on. And collectively, as a building, whether they're an English language arts teacher or science, or even in our allied arts, we all have goals towards reading instruction. So to be able to adapt to our different areas, to make the little sense out of that, but also adapt the mindset that, you know, every teacher is a literacy teacher at school. So ours, we're looking for ten percent increases there and have taken a lot of steps to kind of reflect on our current instruction, how it's delivered, make those necessary changes and looking forward to seeing where that goes.
Is this using the grade level proficiency cuts that the states establish? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
How is the reading inventory taken? I'm familiar with the other two, I guess I'm...
So the reading inventory is through Scholastic. It's, it isn't, it's an online test. It's adaptive, like, like math, but it's, is, in my opinion, the most accurate determiner of a student's lexile level, which is their ability, what text complexity can they read and comprehend at?
Do you have a clue, state that they take in the SRO?
Yeah.
That might be.
That's what we're...
That's, that's, I think it's... But how many, I mean, maps three times a year or ones?
So the reading inventory is, is much shorter, can be accomplished in about fifteen minutes. And they're doing that more on a monthly basis to help them find, to measure growth. And there's some instructional planning components that come to it. But really, it's about finding a good fit novel for them, for their independent reading activities to support what they're learning in the classroom.
Something I wanna point out because it's been in the news, you'll hear the, in particular, this time around, more the Republican leadership criticizing, like, less than half of Wisconsin students are proficient in reading. What they don't share with you is that the proficiency cuts in Wisconsin for ELA and reading are around the sixty-fifth percentile. So statistically, if you're average, you would have about thirty-five percent of your kids meeting proficiency at that grade level. That's how high they set the benchmarks. In math, it's roughly around fifty-fifth percentile is the proficiency cuts. And those cuts are based off of NAEP cut scores, which is a international organization that some states have adopted as this is, if we want our kids to be competitive globally, that's the achievement level we want them to be at. But it just doesn't get the semantics of it, what a lot of people don't realize, that that's the sixty-fifth percentile. So when we have, like in sixth grade, forty-five percent of our kids are at that proficiency level, that's actually ten percent higher than what the national average or the state average would be.
Got it.
So again, that's a target that it's unlikely that we'll ever get one-hundred percent of our kids above the sixty-fifth percentile. You're talking, it's statistically, it's a pretty high bar there, but it's something that we strive to. I just wanted to bring that context because it's kind of, well, no kidding, less than half the kids are proficient when you set the cut at sixty-fifth percentile. That's fifteen percent above the middle, so.
I think that was one of our celebrations as a, as a leadership team and a school leadership team and as an entire staff, too, is that when we were crafting goals and where we wanted to be, our current status, we're all above or well above the state average, too. So we were, felt like we were dealing from a position of strength as well.
So even though you see those numbers, they reflect the highest achieving numbers in the area that we're still striving for.
All right, our relationships goal. After reviewing our data, we wanted to get to seventy-five percent of our students agreeing or strongly agreeing that we are a friendly, welcoming and safe place. This is measured by two different surveys. It's kind of a combination with this, the similar concept. One is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and then we do an internal student survey as well. And really kind of our reasoning behind this is that we originally saw that only fifty-six percent of students, based on last year's data, felt safe at school, to which was honestly a shocker and, you know, like, not knowing that we start with our highest needs first and feeling safe and having relationships before we even get to learning, an area that we really needed to, to work on. Part of what skewed that survey as well was participation in that survey, too. So right now, in a, we kind of had a check-in, we did, we issued a survey a couple of weeks ago, well over eighty percent of our students reported that they feel safe and welcome at school, which was, which was good to see. That one was still anonymous and we're working up to a confidential, but not anonymous survey of making sure that, you know, because we got about six hundred students who responded to the survey, we're missing almost a hundred and fifty kids, too, you know? So it's important that we get everybody's voice in that. So we're gonna continue to monitor that and our, our school counselors are doing some good work, too, with some relationship activities and pulling in some focus groups of students, too, to kind of get at that, you know, why did you respond that you don't, you know, feel safe? Was it, is it a peer issue, is it a building issue, you know? So trying to combat that on multiple levels there and feel good about our progress so far. Lastly, our responsiveness goal. We have a Professional Learning Communities rubric, to which at the end of last year, each PLC in our school, and our PLCs look...
You can click on it. It's not work, I want you to see it.
So our PLCs are a little bit different than the high school. So if, you know, Ms. Rimey, in her past life, as a teacher, was part of the sixth grade social studies PLC, meaning that she was in that PLC with one other sixth grade social studies teacher from the other team, okay? So they, they have a, it's a small PLC in there, so they're split up by grade level. And then we have our allied arts people, so arts and tech ed and robotics were a little bit more on their own. But with the smaller groupings, it's allowed them to be pretty specific about, you know, where I'm at and then what is my path to getting to being a high-performing PLC? And we felt that this fits into responsiveness because of the goals that we have for a high-performing PLC, which is reporting on standards, using flexibly, flexible grouping in the classroom. So really being responsive to individual students, not a whole class, you know? So really breaking down to each, each learner itself and we're giving them feedback on their, where they're at in terms of their learning. So we are asking each of our PLCs to, in each subcategory, move to the right towards a high-performing, high-performing PLC.
Questions on our goals?
So do you work on this during, what do you call it, the days that you guys...
In-service days.
In-service days. Is that when you work on these things or is this outside of that? I mean, obviously outside of that. But do you, do you work on those goals and everything during in-service or is that something you do more outside than you do in-service?
So, yes, 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 yes. So it's, we have certainly the in-service time, our monthly staff meetings, but then our, our teams have a forty-five minute approximately daily collaborative period, too. So they're really working, especially on the PLC work, on a daily basis. They have agendas and they track their progress and are trying to be as responsive, you know, from a day-to-day basis, a little bit less big picture. But these, these four goals have structured all of our, all of our work for the year. So we try, have taken a lot of steps to kind of share that. So we try, have taken a lot of steps to kind of share that vision with people, with how everything we do feeds to these four main goals.
Jessica, how are you liking this? You haven't said much.
Yeah, yeah, no, I love this. One of, one of the parts of the goals that I appreciated the most was, one of the first things Ryan did when, when he came was, he established a leadership group of, of teachers from every corner of the building with different perspectives, that see students in different ways. And when we looked at the data, there was a moment of, of celebration of, of we are doing well when you compare us to other schools in our area, when we compare to the state nationally, but there's also an eagerness in our staff that that's not good enough, which I think is healthy and competitive and what makes us keep going forward. And when we looked at that data together, these goals kind of just came from that process. We could see areas where we could make great impact that would meet the needs of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we have our school board minutes. Two meetings, one on October twenty-eighth with the regular and closed, and then one on November fourth. We'll have to do them separately through different people for each one. Any questions on those? Otherwise looking for a motion to approve our October twenty-eighth regular and closed
I move to approve the minutes of the October twenty eighth, twenty nineteen regular and closed session school board meeting minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved in second to approve the minutes of the October twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen regular and closed session school board meeting minutes as presented. Roll cover, please.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gatcha?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do you want me to vote?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Fisher.
Motion carried with Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
Okay, November fourth, any questions on that? Otherwise looking for a motion approved on November fourth.
I move to approve the minutes of the November fourth, twenty nineteen closed session school board as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moved in second to approve the minutes of the November fourth, twenty nineteen closed session school board meeting as presented. Roll cover, please.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray? Mr. Scarrow?
Abstained.
Ms. Degner?
Abstained.
Ms. Gatcha?
Abstained.
Okay. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Motion carried. General Other Fund Bills was true.
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number one three seven nine two one through one three eight zero nine five. Wire transfers three twenty-nine through three thirty-nine in A C H checks zero nine five through one one eight in a combined amount of one million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. There's a, there was some additional information on several of the bills in your board packet.
So that was a lot for the repair, building of various pumps for the H V A system. Is this something we do like on a regular basis?
Yeah, and a lot of, the major ones were, I think, the pool pumps. So a lot of times we refurbish those, so they can put new bearings in and other things in terms of just fixing those up, so couldn't even tell you the number of pumps we have district-wide, but there's a number of them in the H V A system, so.
That was a lot.
Yeah, that was a lot.
That was a lot.
Could you explain a little bit more or respond on the purchase of the K five report card program? What is, what is that?
Otis, that is the, Otis is, we're moving to a standards-based report card and Otis will enable us to, basically where parents can look at in real time, here's where the progress is at the student, here's the instructional skills that the teacher's working on with that student.
Okay, so this is different than Skyward or?
Yeah, it's different than Skyward. Skyward doesn't have that capacity or that capability.
Okay.
To do that. So I can make sure, probably the best thing would be to have Amy do a presentation as we get rolling with Otis and ensure that we'll go through on what it is. It's something the, the report card committee, we spent a lot of time looking at standard space report cards last year and, and what approach would be the best, and then this, this tool was selected because of that ability to really address the needs of individual kids and, and track that across grade level over time.
Is that something that you would look to expand to junior high and high school as well, or?
Uh, it's something that they're reviewing as well at the.
Big smile.
We're looking at it. Right now, they can't do what we want them to do, so they have to code the program to do it. So that's where we're at.
Okay, so it's only available through fifth grade?
Right now.
Right now. Uh, it, it hasn't, they haven't developed within the algorithm to convert that standards base to a letter grade as well. So we're wanting at the middle school to be able to grade students based off of standards base, but we want them to be prepared as going into high school where they, they have that letter grade there, so.
So I just spoke with them actually last week and I have to put together like exactly what I want them to be able to do and then they have to go to their tech people and say, here, can you make this happen?
Okay.
So that's where we're at with it.
So the elementary schools will be moving next fall to no longer having letter grades?
Right, in three, four, and five, yeah. Which is, has, doesn't happen often, but I've had a parent or two argue over a fourth grade art grade. But it will be, it'll give them a lot more information in relationship to where the students have what they need. And what I really like is, say you have a student, it works on both ends, but that goes into second grade and in that first trimester, say it's a high achieving student, they've already exceeded all the standards for second grade. And then, you know, as a parent, you don't have that communication, even as a teacher, you don't really have, okay, well, what's that next step? That's one of the reasons why we use MAP, because it will tell them what those instructional skills are that the kid's ready for, but from a report card standpoint, you don't have any idea as a parent, it's just like, oh, okay, it's, yeah, I know you met it first term, second, third, fourth. On, on the other end, say you have a student who didn't meet those skills or standards by the end of the grade, well, now they go to the next grade, it's just a new report card. This will give a longitudinal report where the teachers can continue to build on exactly where that student's at and what that kid's needs are moving forward.
Which makes sense at that grade level, 'cause even going into parent-teacher conferences and being told your son's math grade went down, what are you doing a year in advance? To the kid, he doesn't care. He still has a B and he used to have an A, you know, I mean, it, it doesn't.
We would deal with kids where.
Ten, eleven years old.
You know, because they were doing their homework, they were, you know, retaking the, the tests, working with the teachers, stay in elementary school, doing everything they needed, and they might have, oh, you've got a B on your report card.
Right.
And then you get a letter from the, the teacher saying, hey, I really think Johnny would benefit from, you know, summer school and enrichment, and the parent's like, what are you talking about? You gotta be. But the kid never reached, you know, the grade level norm or expectation, there's that gap there, they were adjusting. So we're, we're excited about the capacity of it, it, it will also help streamline the work. We're always looking for, how can we take pieces off of the plates of the teachers as they develop the, the common assessments and as those get uploaded into there, there will be a lot of potential for that self-scoring. And because it's a living, breathing document that the parents can get into, we're feeling like that there's not gonna, we'll be able to move away from that traditional, hey, here's the trimester report card, you need to go and spend the weekend going in and putting all of that together because it's continuous and ongoing.
Which would be nice for our special ed kids too.
So I don't know, I'm going way into depth on it, we should, we'll present that and we'll share.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Other questions? Otherwise looking for a motion to approve our general.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of November eleventh, twenty nineteen. Check numbers one three seven nine two one to one three eight zero nine five. Wire transfers three two nine to three three nine and A C H check number zero nine five to one one eight in the combined amount of one million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second to approve the general and other fund bills of November eleventh, twenty nineteen. Checks number one three seven nine two one to one three eight zero nine five. Wire transfers three twenty-eight to three thirty-nine. A C H check number zero nine five to one one eight in the combined amount of one million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents as presented. Uh, roll cover, please.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degner?
Yes.
Ms. Gatcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Motion carried. Student report.
So in honor of our veterans, Elkhorn Area High School is hosting a Veterans Day Assembly tomorrow and having an army visit during Thursday lunch. The soccer team did amazing at state, however, they did lose in the last few minutes. Sidney Balboni will also be representing Elkhorn at state for swimming. In the classroom, the business teachers are hosting a mini business pitch competition that challenges students to create a business plan and present it. Our teachers and students are also preparing for the end of the trimester coming up next week, which means finals week. So this past week at the middle school, the book fair has been going on. Elkhorn Middle School Student Council is also hosting an animal shelter drive for Lakeland. In addition to the student council, the archery club has been busy scheduling, having more than three tournaments this month, this month, which is quite a lot for them, so. And then options is working on O F A S during their blended learning days. Be kind, be safe, and be respectful. Students who demonstrate their positive traits receive a B, which is placed in a hive that they have in each lunchroom. They also have seen some awesome student behaviors as staff reinforce their positive expectations. The high school continues to expand. Each week, new students join options to complete their high school credits. Also, they have several students who are now scheduled to take classes at Gateway Tech, and they even have one student who's looking forward to attend the university in the spring. At the elementary schools, they had Veterans Day programs to thank all our veterans, which was today. At Jackson, second and first graders learn math by playing bingo and card games. Westside Elementary is hosting its picture retakes and movie night this week. Finally, Tibbetts had their parent-teacher conferences last week, and also the soccer team came and visited all the elementary schools.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fisher.
First reading the revised code.
Okay, so this is a policy that the policy committee has spent many hours on. And I, where we went is, it got to the point where we felt, you know what, it's, it's probably easier for us just to put together a new policy replacing the old one, rather than trying to show all the strikes and the crossouts and so forth. So what I did is I went through and I, I highlighted in yellow the main areas or points of discussion, but one of the, the common themes that we worked on as a policy committee, and obviously those members felt free to chime in any time, was to create a co-curricular policy, so it applied to athletes and non-athletic events. And so a lot of that was the semantics and the language, but also, not only that, but as we'll get into, from a consequence standpoint, had to address that. We looked at a lot of other districts' policies for that work as well. The first page here, and, and if you need me to stop, you wanna review something, just let me know. Again, this is just the first reading, we can always revisit something in the second reading, but this is a lot of boilerplate language that was already there. There was a slight adjustment made to the G P A to more reflect what that C minus average was. I believe it used to read one point six five, but there's not a, one point seven is a, a C minus, one point six five is less than a C minus. So we've just updated that, rounding that up. So nothing significant in these, and, and some of the components that are included in co-curricular policies are required by the W I A A and, you know, others are school district discretion. When we come down to, I mean, we'll look at the training and conduct, we had a little bit of update in language just to include, you know, the e-cigarettes, and I, they really didn't exist last time when this policy was, you know, written. So we've included that, who knows in five years what else we'll have to include. But we also put in the, you know, clarification of a student who sells, provides transports with intent to distribute, or hosts a gathering to or more people where alcohol or drugs are being used, may give, may be given a penalty at the next highest level above the level at which they would normally receive. So if you're the one hosting or distributing, that you're potentially could be receiving the penalty at the second level rather than the first level. We had a lot of discussion around attendance at gatherings, we did decide to leave that in, that if you are, some people refer to it as a guilt by association, that is reflective of what our previous policy was, but that if you are in attendance at a gathering where controlled substances are being used, that is a violation, except as following. And this is consistent with what we had, that you're, you go there, you become aware of the use, and then you leave. Obviously, that's open ended, that's something the activities director would need to determine during the investigation, but that does happen, you know, to many kids and if determined, you know, that that was the case, then that's not a violation. A student is present at an establishment licensed to sell alcoholic beverages in addition to food or recreational services, restaurant, bowling alley, et cetera, and a student does not consume alcoholic beverages. Now, we changed this, I believe the old one read that they were there with their parent or guardian, we modified that because you can't go to Wisconsin without being at an establishment that has alcohol. So that's like, you go to Texas Roadhouse with your buddies that has a bar there or the bowling alley, your parents are there, so we changed it to that you don't consume. Also, we'd have kids in violation of purple and gold, you know, working the event as a volunteer 'cause your parents are there. So I think that cleans that up. A student is present at a family gathering where alcoholic beverages are available to adults only and a student doesn't consume alcoholic beverages. This is something that, you know, Wisconsin law, we're unique, that parents can give alcohol to their kids. I've been to Super Bowl parties where parents would let their little four or five-year-old have a sip of their beer. I'm like, hey, that's a co-curricular violation, man. But technically, I mean, that is where our co-curricular violation is not in line with what state law is, but we, it's consistent with basically every co-curricular violation that's out there. It's more strict than Wisconsin state law in that aspect. Then these were also included. A student or a bystander who requests emergency assistance related to drug or alcohol use to assist with a medical emergency cooperates with and assists law enforcement, stays on the scene, and/or who encounters law enforcement at a medical facility at which the victim is being treated, may not be subject to a code of conduct violation. The victim or bystanders must meet the state amnesty law requirements, the victim may not falsely claim amnesty, knowing that the situation that he or she reports does not exist, the student cannot falsely claim a medical emergency. So the W I A put a similar requirement in, but as related to sexual assault bystanders. This is based off of the state amnesty law for drug use or overdose. We felt that we don't want our students in a situation where there's a medical emergency and they're not seeking help because they're worried about a co-curricular violation. So the policy committee, in looking at that reviewing, felt that we wanted to include that as well, and it is in line with what the W I A mandated that all schools put in as relates to sexual assault victims. So likewise, if students are aware of a sexual assault and they stay there to help, you know, if there was drinking or drug use there, they, that is not a co-curricular violation. Any questions to that point so far? Other language is pretty similar, we did include, made sure that we had language in there as related to hazing, wanting to make sure that our students understood that. We did have a policy with that, but we wanted to make sure that was included in the co-curricular. Cyber image violations, playground. Cyber image violations, playground or unsportsmanlike conduct, and assault of an official. This is W I A A mandated. And it seems bizarre, but not that Paul's ever aware of a situation of that happening, but in football in particular, where officials are part of the field, there's been incidents where players have purposely accidentally run into the official and blindsided him or blocked him. So the W I A mandated that this is all included in there, and you'll notice that their suspension is much more severe than any of their other suspensions, if there's an incident out of that. So that's W I A required. Now, I did put in, in, in going through, and there was some language that, um, after the policy committee meeting, we wanted to, um, it was left to Jody, myself, to kind of put that language in, so I highlighted this uh, because I feel it captures what the policy committee wanted, but I wanted to make sure we reviewed it. It's comes to the co-curricular code reporting and investigation. One of the things the policy committee talked about is the, the concern was brought forward of, after looking at other policies, kind of a statute of limitations on when someone could report. Because there's been cases, well-publicized cases around the state where someone knows that a high schooler may have done something over the summer, and they'll wait until, okay, now you guys are going to playoffs and I'll report it in tournament. And it's happened with people from other school districts who capture something on social media that they saw. And they'll turn the kids in because if you get a violation going into the playoffs, now you're out for the entire playoffs. And so we wanted to have a statute of alleged violations of the co-curricular code of conduct must be reported within a hundred and twenty days of the alleged incident in order to be investigated by the activities director. Extenuating circumstances may allow for an investigation to take place after the hundred and twenty-day reporting window upon approval of the district administrator. Now, I put that language in there because we may have something, let's say it's something really significant like a sexual assault, that we may not want to be in a position as a district saying, well, you know, yeah, that, that happened a hundred and twenty-five days ago, so we're not going to look into that. It may not be in our best interest to not pursue that, but if it's something that's, you know, in those general, yeah, here's this Facebook posting that I saw this kid did six months ago, uh, we felt that would, you know, if you're aware of something, you need to bring it forward sooner than that.
So let, why, why a hundred and twenty days? Why not like thirty days?
Yeah, we, go ahead.
It was to cover the summer months.
If, if it happened in June and then it would give thirty days, we certainly could change. I mean, that one twenty days, that was something I wanted, you know, this group to discuss. That was why we put one twenty though, as if it was an incident that happened in June and it got reported to us in September, the first of school.
Wasn't arbitrary.
Yeah, no, just curious.
Yeah, we had ninety and then we went back.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Wouldn't hold, you know, no student could, um, basically hold it over someone's head. Easy as blackmail is another reason for a hundred and twenty days. You know, someone could capture something when they're a freshman under the old rules and then hold it over their head for four years and basically.
Bring it forward.
Senior year, bring it forward their senior year when, or something.
I mean, we don't want to create a situation where kids are like, hey, as long as we keep it quiet for a hundred and twenty days. Uh, but that's, I, I think that's where we also have extenuating circumstances.
I think that's a good idea.
That needed to be in there. That's good.
Um, any other questions on that? That's a new concept for us. Then the other big new concept, now, something that I personally have always felt in, um, that the W I A's penalty requirement is that there's one game. And, um, a one-game suspension is the minimum requirement. I've, working as a principal and now as a superintendent, I, I've often seen very punitive consequences in the co-curricular code to the point where community members, parents, students will lie, cover up, and not be truthful because they're not in agreement with how severe the penalty is, to be frank. And it doesn't allow a proactive approach to work with the students. So I, I lay that out there, out front, because this is a, the, the proposal is a significant departure from what our penalty levels were in the past. Previously, a first offense would have been one-third of the season. A second offense would have been two-thirds of the season, uh, well above what the requirement is from the W I A. So what we're proposing is a student will be suspended for ten percent or a minimum of one game of the total number of competition dates of their current or next season. The activities director will determine the exact number of contests. The total will be rounded up in a decimal situation. So at a minimum, if you're in a sport that has nine games like football, and, or is it eight, Paul, in the regular season?
Nine.
Eight, nine, okay. Then you're going to sit a minimum of one game, uh, if you get that co-curricular violation. If you're in basketball that has twenty-four games, you'd be sitting two point five, um, games. They round that up to the, to the half, so they're not coming in mid-second quarter or whatever. Students guilty by association will be suspended for five percent or a minimum of one game of the total number of competition dates. So this is a student who's at a gathering or at a party, they didn't participate, they're there, yeah, as a designated driver. The investigation clearly showed that that was the case. There would still be a consequence, but it's, uh, slightly less severe depending on the, the event that they're in. A second offense, a student will be suspended for thirty percent of the total number of competition dates of their current or next season. However, if the student has participated in what we're calling the win back, and I'll explain that in a second, um, then their, the violation will be penalized as a first offense. And the activities director will determine the exact number. A third offense, uh, which previously I believe was a, a full year. We put down that the student will make a mandatory appearance before the appeals committee for determination of consequence, even if the win back provision has been utilized. Um, that would allow that appeals committee to make a determination as to, uh, look at all the circumstances, what's going on, wanting to be more proactive, you know, support and put helps in there for the student. We do not have very many students that get to that level, and if we do, they, they have some substantive issues, issues, um, that they need help with. So win back provision is a student who goes one calendar year without a violation and completes, uh, the Elkhorn Area School District and Other Drug Abuse Program earns. And I'm going to need to update this language. I caught it elsewhere, but in, um, they'll be able to earn back, um, basically that their next offense would be considered a first offense. I, I tasked Mary Ellen to look at and see is there a program that we could bring in-house and handle? And she came up with a lot of options, but there wasn't a good fit or a good option for us to deliver with our staff in-house. So I'll, I missed this language. I changed it elsewhere, where the recommendation would be that the students are referred to the school social worker for that social worker to help them get engaged in one of the many offerings related to alcohol and other drug awareness. Because it would really depend on that individual student and what that student's needs are. For example, we may have a student who's a regular user that they may need a four-to-six-week, um, day treatment program through Rogers as opposed to a student who binge drank one time, who just may need some online education, I'm checking. But in working with Mary Ellen, that was, um, her recommendation. I believe the language is actually right here. Upon receiving a violation related to alcohol and other drug awareness, the school's social worker will be notified, and the student and their family will work with the school's social worker to find a program with the appropriate level of assistance need to deal with any A O D A issues. That's a departure from what we reviewed in the policy committee, because that's information that was learned afterwards. Questions or concerns on that?
Where is the appeals committee defined?
Yeah, let me, it's, it's down here.
Yeah, it is.
So I'll, I'll get to that. That appeals committee has changed in the, um, which I think made us feel comfortable with the appeals committee making that determination at that level. Uh, so I'll continue to go down, um.
One second, Jason.
Yeah.
I hate to throw one thing into the wind back that I didn't think of before.
Uh, no, please do.
But I, I didn't think of the fact that there, if, what if they commit a violation that's not alcohol or drug-related? In other words, they commit a violation such as hazing or vandalism or any of these other ones.
Right. That's why I think we need to modify this, because then the social worker would look at the circumstances and be able to determine that this was not an alcohol and other drug issue. Therefore, you don't need that, that training yet.
Right.
We could modify it that they may need different, let's say it is a hazing issue and they have a behavioral disorder.
Could there be some other?
Yeah. I could modify this to make it more, even more generic, that the school's social worker, you know, reviews and could look at.
Some sort of program.
Yeah, the only thing that we talked about in our meetings was if we have an outside agency that we're sending students to, um, it's going to take some time. And we put back in the language there that they have to be enrolled and participating in show proof before they're eligible to come back.
Yeah, that, that really wouldn't work.
Right. We had talked that, that only works if we do it in-house.
Yeah. So I, I think I'll make a note, um, Jody, talking so she knows on when she listens. Then we modify that language to, perhaps we, we need to modify it to that they're working with the social worker. Because I'm working with a, a student right now and, um, we did the intake there, but it's four to five weeks before that student can even get into the day treatment program. It's up in Brown beer, so it's, yeah, it, it can be a lengthy time. Would, would people be okay modifying that language to when they begin working with?
Even if they're enrolled, like they call up and they, they get enrolled, that doesn't necessarily mean they've taken.
Right, that they're on the list or they're in the queue.
This is one way to get them to do that. Even if it takes four, six weeks to get in, they still are enrolled.
The accountability, I think, should be with the school social worker.
Right.
As long as that.
Yeah.
Right.
That, the school social worker needs to sign off that yes, the student is doing this and therefore eligible.
And not the outside agency.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. And, and this could, I mean, because that suspension is short, one game, that means they need to get hopping on, on doing that. But in working with a student, I mean, it doesn't take, you can have it done the next day where you're in the queue.
Right.
Yeah. Other questions on that? This is boilerplate language. It speaks to if you're suspended for one game, but it happens to be in the W I A tournament, you're done for the tournament. Which I don't agree with, but we don't have control over that. Uh, also language, this is still carried over, that a coach may not impose a penalty on an athlete, which is more severe than the co-curricular code of conduct is outlined. This is still language carried over that speaks to that if you have a violation, you're not eligible for special awards.
You can't be on homecoming.
Yeah, you can't be on the homecoming court or the prom court if the event falls during when the suspension is being served. We didn't want a student who had a co-curricular violation in the fall being eligible to be on prom court in the spring. Uh, it's just, if it, if you're on suspension, like you're sitting out a third of the season, it happens to fall when prom is, you can't be on the court. Uh, we said that however, depending on the student's misconduct, the student may be eligible to attend the homecoming or prom dance. There are situations where the conduct may have occurred during the school day, which may have a more severe penalty. You know, where you may be restricted from going to the dance because you did it at school as opposed to it just being a co-curricular violation that occurred outside of school. Middle school students, um, this is our current practice, but we want to make sure that was, it's not stated in our, um, high school policy. It's also the W I A policy is that violations from middle school do not carry over to high school. They want to have a clean slate going into the freshman year. Now, this gets into penalties or violations for non-athletic events. And we, um, felt that instead of doing a certain event, we felt in, in looking at some of the other policies, a number of schools use hours of community service. And the reason why is if I'm in a musical, there might only be two performances. Um, there is kind of some inequity in regards to the violation and the severity of that penalty on that event. So this allows for the students to still receive the consequence for the co-curricular violation, but they can earn back their eligibility to participate in that event. So first offense, ten hours, second offense, twenty hours. And then third offense, uh, the mandatory appearance before the appeals committee, a similar win back and similar language as up above for the, um, co-curricular violation. And similar, same language as related to the clean slate. Students. Yeah, so say you're in basketball and the school musical, um, and you get a violation, you're going to have to serve the consequence for both to regain the eligibility. Uh, here's the committee makeup, the appeal procedure. Uh, it'll come in a second here, but there's kind of a weird cyclical, um, structure that we had previously. Um, so we said decision-making, decision, or disciplined decisions regarding code violations taken against a student may be appealed by a parent guardian and/or student to the principal. Questions regarding if an offense has occurred, extenuating circumstances, or unjust sanctions imposed may be appealed. The activities director handles the investigation, so they can appeal to the principal. The principal must receive a written appeal no later than five days. The accused will be considered ineligible for competition during the appeal process. Principal will assemble an appeals committee. The appeals committee will consist of the principal, a pupil services representative. That's someone from guidance, school psychologist, um, special ed, uh, no, guidance, school psychologist. And then a district director. That could be any of the district directors. And then also a school board member and one teacher. So we felt that would give a good cross-section of representation across, um, the different stakeholders that are bringing different perspectives to the appeal. Uh, the appeals committee shall keep all student information confidential. Meeting will be audio recorded for the keeping of minutes. Accused may have parents and/or witnesses present. Appeals process will be conducted by the activities director. Evidence of the alleged violation will be presented. The accused may then present their argument as to their innocence or reasoning why the penalty should be modified. You'll notice the activities director will conduct the meeting because they, that individual handled the investigation, but they will not be a, um, voting member of that appeals committee. So it then separates or detaches that, any conflict of interest that may or may not be there. Committee may ask questions to assist them in determining guilt or non-guilt, or whether or not the penalty should be modified due to extenuating circumstances. Questions can also help in determining the penalty being assessed. By the end of the appeals process, if the student desires, they may accept the original penalty of issue, uh, penalty issued by the activities director rather than any modified penalty recommended by the appeals committee.
Can, can you explain why that is written?
If, if someone feels that that appeals committee gave a more strict or more severe penalty from what they were asking, it gives them the option, no, I'll just take the, the original penalty.
Well, I can go through these expulsion, um, hearings, and there's a recommendation that's given to the, to the ward, okay? We make the decision, you know? I, I'm just, I, I just, I don't, I don't think that follows that if they want to go through the appeal process, they're going to go through the appeal process. They can't have an either war or argument. It's like, why have the appeal process?
Other thoughts?
I mean, I just don't, I, I'm not following the rationale. Why, why would they go through the appeal process and say, okay, well, oh, I'll go back to the, I mean, I, I just, I just don't, I don't follow the logic of why we're allowing that option, I, you know?
I, I'm following what you're saying.
I mean, if they're going to agree with the athletic activities director findings and recommendations for punishment, will agree to it. You know, if you're not going to agree to it before the appeals process, why would we go through the appeal process and then go back to the original?
Yeah.
You know, ramifications. I, I just feel it's a waste of time to go through appeals process if they're not going to go with the recommendation of that committee.
How many appeals could you say we have in a year? Would you guess?
Two or three?
Two or three. So it's not a large amount.
Does this still allow for the appeals committee to let? Does this still allow for the appeals committee to lessen the?
They have complete discretion to set it at whatever they want.
The appeals committee could lessen the, so I guess that would be the reason why you would go through the appeals process.
But there used to be another step over that, that if you didn't like the decision of the appeal, then you appealed it to the head principal and that's been taken out. So there's no, if you don't like the appeal committee's decision, there's no further appeal.
There's no further appeal.
So this allows them to go back. It still gives them an option of, okay, because before they could take it a step further.
We've, we've had an appeal in the past where the appeals committee, you know, were, you know, from their perspective, well-intended and they felt like they were putting in provisions that, um, were lesser than what the consequence would have been. But the parties appealing it felt very strongly and, you know, had very good reasons as to why that that was much more stringent or over the top than what the original consequence would have been in the first place. And so that's why that provision, we looked at putting that in there, because that would kind of eliminate, because there isn't another appeal after that.
Right.
That that decision's final, that it would at least then give, well, you know, at the end of the day, you're, you're coming to the appeals committee, you know, at minimum, i- it's the original consequences upheld. Cause the appeals committee could just make that determination.
Correct.
No, appeal denied, and that's what most board, most appeal committees authority is, is, is their guilt or innocence? And if they did it, too bad, that's what the consequence is according to the policy. We put in more flexibility there, because as a policy committee, we wanted to be, give that group an opportunity to look at the extenuating circumstances. And I, and I feel that's a good thing, but we also felt, well, if that party was really in disagreement or thinks that, that, that intent that may have been good by the appeals committee was over the top, then fine, the, the original penalties upheld.
Okay, no, I, I guess I, I, I understand where you're coming from on that, so.
And maybe they have more information now to provide, so it just gives them one more step. And like I said, he said, there's a few a year, so.
And this is assuming that they haven't gotten to the point of being recommended for expulsion, so, you know.
And again, we're a learning institution, so let's try to, you know, give them another chance and not just throw the baby out with the bathwater all the time.
Sure, and really that would only apply to the first and second offense, because the third offense.
Right, you go to a jail.
There is, it's basically, it's just what the appeal committee establishes. Yeah, cause there is no other, it's whatever they establish is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that is it, that's, it's a link, it's our longest policy that we have in the district and there's quite a few updates there. I, I'm really pleased with what the policy committee came up, I feel it's proactive, I feel it addresses a lot of areas we didn't think of previously. I'm curious on the student perspective, Rachel or Kylie, what are your thoughts?
I like it, I like the win back thing that you have.
The win back provision?
It gives kids like a good chance to kind of restart.
And I like the community service where the kids know what they're like with athletics and stuff. I think that's a really nice touch that you guys put in there. And I was talking with her and I don't think ten is a very low or high number, I think it's about right. For like the first offense, I think it's very achievable for students.
It's a ten.
Yeah, I mean, we talked a lot about.
Yeah, different options. The second one was fifty, and we went down.
It was like, we actually loosened it. Okay.
And hopefully we would never have to address it, but the simultaneous athletic, non-athletic consequences. Uh, students in three academic, uh, clubs and a sport. So then is it ten hours? Because you always hear from the parents you have for thirty years about double jeopardy, blah, blah, blah. But the more you're involved, you also have to understand you have more to lose. But just so we're aware that that may come up, because if you're an FFA officer, uh, you're in HOSA and you're in basketball and something happens, those consequences are pretty heavy compared to somebody else and hopefully we never have to.
I, I would interpret it as just ten hours, but are you thinking the way it reads, it could be interpreted as thirty hours?
No, no, I'm thinking, how do I take it out? Cause FFA is going down to a national convention or this and that, so can I apply my ten hours early or, you know, because the timelines again are.
Yeah, different.
Are, are different and hopefully we never have to deal with it, but I, I guarantee you, when we do, the parents and the, the student will be swinging.
Yeah, so they may have kids who really need to get those ten hours in really quick, so they could go to the national convention, yeah. What's that?
One weekend, you can life it out. Yeah, can they clean house?
But just so we're aware, cause that's always been an issue in the community. And unfortunately, it does happen, and we try to do our best, but it doesn't matter how well you write a rule.
No, it is.
There's ways to try to circumvent it and.
And, and oftentimes, even in those timelines, and I, I worked with a kid from a different school who was going through a co-curricular violation issue, and the way their appeal process was, by the time the student was even able to go through the appeals, eighty percent of the consequence was already served.
Right.
And that district only had the ability to determine guilty or innocent, not look at any certain, you know, circumstantial or, or extenuating circumstances and reduce or modify it, because they had, the way their policy was written, it was very rigid. And it, it, I, I felt did a lot of damage and potential damage for, you know, a pretty good kid who happened to be in the wrong place, wrong time.
I like it, I think it's fair.
Do you feel with the, the penalty levels that it's at, would students be more likely to be more open and honest or?
I would hope so.
Then that's all right.
Yeah, I would hope so too, but I mean, I think kids are always gonna try and get away with something, no matter what you do.
Exactly.
But being honest, you know, it's kind of hard to control what kids do, but I think it is a fair policy as much as it can be, so.
I would say with, from my parent hat, I would feel much more, you know, I, I've always felt like I'm gonna hold my kid accountable, you get the consequence, I'm, I'll march, I'll be the first one to march in. But then, if you're dealing with a kid with, um, substance abuse or issues like that and, you know, and I'm working with someone and you're looking at, well, this is the only positive thing they have in their life, and the, the penalty is two-thirds of a season or for a whole year, you're out.
Right.
Then I think that pushes, you know, the parent to look at what's more important.
Yeah.
My, my kid's wellbeing or something that might get him back on track or, um, following the letter of the law and holding him accountable. And it puts the parents in an awkward position. I feel like this is more from that parent hat that, oh yeah, this is, I can hold you accountable and there's a way back.
I think there's more prevention in this, saying that, okay, you've, you've made a mistake as a student and now we're gonna give you the chance to win it back.
Right.
At a cost, I mean, you have to take an AODA assessment, um, but that's a preventative piece so that we're not seeing the second and third violations.
Yeah.
I mean, it's trying to catch it early and do more of the education upfront. And as a parent, I wanna be honest with the school and I asked many of my friends, you know, if your child has a code violation, would you tell the school? And it's like, no, that's a family issue. You know, the school has a very strict policy, so it's like, how do we bridge that gap between the parents and the community and work together and, and allow students to make mistakes, but then still have a pathway back?
All right, if anything else comes up, I, there's just a couple of cleanups, but, um, I want to thank Jody, she did a lot of work and research and pulling together on this, so.
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you, Jody.
Then we'll have the second meeting our next meeting.
No personnel is giving.
Not doing it on the parade, but you may have seen that there was a job posting.
There's an opening.
The resignation didn't come in time to be on this agenda officially. Um, it didn't come in time for the, this agenda.
So yeah, just so you know, I did hire somebody and I also got a resignation.
They'll be on the next one, our elementary social. So on, on the next meeting, we will have a resignation and an official hire. Our elementary social worker will be stepping down at the Christmas break time. So that'll be official with next meeting and we can speak to that.
School gifts?
School gifts, I have Tibbetts PTA donated two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one cent to the library. I'm guessing they bought some specific items. And then Maria Combe had donated cash, books, and school supplies to students in need valued at eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Motion to approve our generous gifts.
Also move.
Second.
Second.
So moving to second to approve the generous gifts of the Tibbetts Pete Elementary PTA and Maria Combe as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, announcements.
All right, um, I'll keep it short, we've got just the incumbents. Reminder, Jimmy Ray and Paul Martel, a memo with election information will be at your place this evening. It's always good idea to publicly declare if you will run or not run for reelection. Um, Elkhorn residents interested in running for the school board should contact Jody Esman in the district office for a packet of materials. And then the policy committee members, um, November twenty fifth will not work, so I'll go back to the drawing board on that. Matt, you're gonna be out of town that day. We'll get a different date. That's all I have. And, oh, the deadline to, um, submit paperwork for running, for the five people watching the video at home, is, um, oh, off the top of my head, it's, I believe, Jan, I'll get that next week, January fifth, I believe?
January seventh.
January seventh, I think.
It's first Tuesday.
Second.